There's two.
In this, not this budget?
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. You have the total cost of one deputy, two deputies, four deputies. It's pretty easy to figure out. I think the way...
It should be in your book section.
In my three o'clock one, if I would look?
And here I am thinking I goofed and didn't give you a...
I'm trying to make you sweat it out of me.
I was starting to, thank you.
Yeah.
And the way this budget's laid out, they're looking at rolling over about eighty-two thousand dollars for next year. And that's if everything goes right. And there actually may be more than that. There's a lot of unknowns at this point, like exact cost, so... But right now, the way it's laid out, it's, there's eighty-two thousand fifty dollars that they're proposing will be rolled over for the 2019, 2020 contract.
So eighty-four, that's what you have this budget?
Eighty-two. That's gonna be rolled over, the way they have it figured right now, that'll be about the amount that's rolled over for next year. That's what they're looking at right now.
You know, when I talked to him today, he still planned on putting Daniel over there because he wants him in that locked area.
Yep.
And with all law enforcement in there, like it was before, so we've got to tell Dennis he's gonna have to vacate that office over there because Daniel...
Is that the office where the gun safe is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was over there with Sheriff with, I was over there with Dennis last week, and that's what he was talking about was...
Oh, there's a room in the back? Because weren't you in where there's the three stations for the officers, right? But the way, he should probably, Daniel should probably have that locked in the office that...
I would think so.
The chief's office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
I mean, I don't think it really matters when he gets over there where he's putting...
But...
Well, I'm like, well, he should have that locked office.
Is that, who's in it now?
Dennis.
Oh, he just kinda took it over?
Yeah. So each one has one belt.
That's not a problem. They'll go to lunch, come back, remove that.
Well, you and I think, like a wife.
Well, I mean, it is what it is. If that's where we need to put him, that's where we need to put him.
Yeah, the staff contract will be in effect, and that's what...
And that puts him right there by dispatch and everything else, too.
And it also keeps his stuff locked up in his, because otherwise it's not locked up, so with Daniel coming.
Yeah.
If he wasn't in that.
Yeah, he's gotta be able to secure his stuff.
Yeah, he's got his files and stuff that have to be locked up. There's no question. I guess we have a consensus on that.
There is a... Of course, man, I can't find it.
Now, the automobile for sixty-nine and six, that's just for one.
Yes.
Okay.
So this year they're buying two, and next year it's...
Correct.
What was, one other question I had on those, that's what I'd like to, what's, what's the twenty thousand dispatch services?
That's always been there, apparently from the sheriff's office, that they pay for dispatch services. And, and all the other agencies paid to, and our police department.
So we were paying for, it's the twenty thousand?
What, the town always is put towards that seventeen?
Ours was less because they handled more calls. There's, they did, when they first started out, they danced.
So it's just a twenty because of...
That's something that they paid all the time, but, yeah.
Well, they show up as any going towards it, maybe it's because we already paid it, we already pay like, July first kind of thing, or something?
Has it been paid for this fiscal year?
From the town, please.
It probably has.
But, well, the county always gives us a check for twenty or twenty-five, so I don't know why...
County gives us a check back?
For dispatch.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't know why that's in too...
Well, but there's an expense on it of twenty thousand, so I'm like, why are we paying out twenty for dispatches? Where are we doing dispatches?
That's what I'm wondering.
That would be a question to ask, and she's here to...
Cause...
Is she not coming today? Or is she coming in four?
She's coming in four.
Sure.
But, yeah, that is a good question.
Vehicle maintenance doesn't reach nine thousand in one year, you know, repairing vehicles.
No, it shouldn't.
And then...
He said that some of these numbers are high.
Yeah.
And if you look at the...
Like office supplies, it's kinda high, yeah.
Well, they're looking at, if you look at the top...
Oil's actually the high, if you think about thirty miles with the...
Well, they have like nine thousand on fuel or something like that.
Seventeen, five?
For fuel.
That's what they got on fuel?
Yeah, that's really high. Because right now, with this budget, they have eighty-two thousand to roll over for next year.
Excellent.
So...
But that actually means that for three deputies, there's a true cost of these numbers stayed the same year after year of four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand four-fifty. And I don't know how we sneak a fifth or a fourth deputy into that budget at a true cost of at least a hundred and five. And that's excluding any more fuel and...
Well, you're gonna lose your cost of vehicle. You're gonna lose a hundred and forty thousand after the first year of cost of vehicle. You're only gonna see that every four years.
And that's what I'm saying, you know, yeah, but, and that's what, that's why we really wanna know on a schedule, how often are we replacing vehicles?
About every fifth year.
Every fifth year, so... So really, that cost needs to be spread out, and if we're gonna go with four vehicles, it needs to be spread out as one-fifth per year, even the savings.
Yep.
Of the cost of that many vehicles, four vehicles, so we're really at, if they're...
Sixty-three thousand.
Seven, or two-hundred-and-eighty thousand by four, I mean, back to...
There's about fourteen thousand per vehicle.
Yeah.
Per vehicle.
By five, I mean, yeah. Per vehicle, yeah, so, you know, I mean, I don't think the true cost's totally gone away with, but it's, it was probably close to fifty thousand a year, I mean, the savings.
But, you know, going back to the dispatch services, it was originally based on the number of calls made each agency, is my recollection, is that right? And so if they are getting city calls, that will increase the calls, and that would increase the amount of money to be paid for dispatches. I don't know if it needs to be twenty thousand, what we are paying now, I don't...
Seventeen, three, twenty-two?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen, three, twenty.
So anyway, that's just an explanation for our due to one.
Why, why are the cell phones six hundred dollars a year? Yeah, of course, and they didn't even, like, for my cell phone.
Seventy, seventy-five, I had to go through my account.
Cell phone are hard, they happen. I couldn't pay my phone bill for three minutes. I got two...
Those are just numbers that they got in their current agreements, their current contracts with them. We probably were paying somewhere around that.
Six hundred for my phone.
Actually, we were, we finally got our own phones, so now I gotta try to sell those phones or whatever.
In case it breaks down.
Well, maybe, sure.
Exactly, if you look, it doesn't sound like it, because they, they mistake it, unless somebody wanted to buy the phone. I have three that, they're iPhones, so we need to, you know, how to put phones for my iPhone that I actually got them. Well, one's still in the box, and we got out of the box.
So none of our phones can be transferred to their...
Unless the deputy wants to buy them, yeah, because they don't have the access. But there, there's a, because I have a hot Jeff Mott file, just because this is so funky, or, you know, something like that.
Thought you might be going with this one, the weapons, two-one-hundred, that includes ARs?
Where are you at?
Down on weapons, two-oh-six-five-dish, twenty-seven-eighty-seven, says two-one-hundred. And that's gotta be for all four deputies, right?
Yeah, and that's gonna change too, because as we found out after this was done, the Lakeview PD has lock twenty-two, forties, generation three, which is what the sheriff's department's currently using. So they're gonna use those weapons.
So they can use that for...
Yep, and it looks like that they're possibly gonna be able to use most, if not all, of our AR fifteens and possibly our shotguns.
And that'll save us...
It'll say, it'll just be that much more money that they roll over. They're gonna take possession of all the weapons, just so we know where they're at.
Okay.
And whatever they don't use, they'll be traded into the sporting goods place that they deal with, and will be credited that back towards their contract. For whatever that they gave them credit for. That's, that's what their sheriff Taylor's proposing, and he's supposed to pick everything up possibly this week, and he'll catalog it all by serial number and everything. And give the town a letter from the sheriff's department saying that we received all these weapons, we're in possession of these weapons. We're assuming all the liability, and the town will be feeling a little bit of blame for these weapons. And then we transfer them to the sheriff's department. Hopefully, by the end of the week, that'll be taken care of. So, yeah, any money that we save on this contract, let's add to this eighty-two thousand that they're looking at and rolling over for next year, so... And that gives us a buffer for overtime or whatever.
Well, everything's inventory, it's all this, I can all expense, I'm not too worried about it, I just, the only bottom line I'm worried about is that, you know, four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, all expenses for just three deputies, and that... And that's obviously including a seventy-thousand dollar rig, you know, if we're to buy one each year, but, you know, hopefully that number gets down to a lower, so we can actually have a fourth, you know?
Where do you have that four seventy at?
Taking our rollover of eighty-two and fifty, minus, actually, I minus off the rig, I minus off the rig, because, and then adding, which the difference of those two is, is twelve, twelve thousand and change, to the operating budget of four-sixty, contract come over, so... That's what I need. I just took off those two, two lines, and the difference, and add it to the four-sixty that we started with. So, it's, you know, just salaries and stuff, you know, three-hundred-and-forty, and then you got expenses of a hundred-and-thirteen, that's not including that capital, and so really, a hundred-and-fifteen, and this other gives us...
Yeah, and you don't, you don't have, you know, the stuff that's gonna fall off, it's gonna be, a lot of the, like, you're asking all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully they're one-time things, so it's less the next year, you know?
The next two years will be the last, and the third year you're gonna start seeing it quiet again.
Like uniforms and...
Yeah, that...
They don't get replaced every year.
No, they get, I think he said, well, they buy him a pair of pants and a shirt every year, that's what they do. Right, because what he said, are two shirts and two pants every year, but the initial startup cost for a uniform will be expensive.
One thing, see how we manage this overtime because that's...
Yeah.
What does investigation mean, or they have to have something like we did, you know, like where we had to have somebody come in and do an internal investigation?
Oh, okay.
Or if there is a big terminal, we need to have outside, they need to...
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I mean...
It is what it is, at this point, we just move forward and see what...
The next six months will tell the story, honestly, because once we get in there and we start spending money, and we start seeing what our straight time, our overtime's gonna be on average, the next six months will really answer a lot of questions.
Overtime is quite high, as thirty-one-five, we're seeing, I mean, that's, that seems to me like high.
But that may change when all the deputies, I mean, I'll have a little...
But he, he told me that there's a lot of numbers in here that are probably high, because there's probably some that are lower than they should be, and there's some that are higher than they should be. We really won't know until we get into the contract.
It's okay, the budget's high, we don't want to come back.
I have more.
You're not getting more, I guess you gotta come back to your overtime.
But, yeah, that, that caught my attention.
Town's on deck, that day goes basically walk one week out of the month.
And really, the fuel for three officers or whatever.
That's high.
That's high, because they'll be mostly in town, right?
Yeah, so, I think that's pretty high.
And you remember too, he, you know, as far as in town, he's not used to dealing with a small area, he's used to dealing with a huge county, so a lot of these numbers are just...
But it's something we can go off of.
It's nice to see, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna keep around with the budget, I'm ordering some...
Well, we have this, so when things, we start getting the expenses from him, we'll do that over there.
Didn't you say Scott, there was some ammunition in there, I mean...
There is, but I don't know how much, and there's probably some more.
It's about a...
Any evidence for him in the lockup over there, so, the main thing that we were after was what kind of weapons are in there, if they're gonna be able to use them, or if he needed a burst, I'm the right way to get it here.
And that's good that we knew those, that's really good.
Yeah, that's a plus, because, I mean...
It's just that much more money we get to roll over.
Right, yeah. I like the animal control, all money on that. Back in the box. Is that animal, or is that also a code? I just question, when you guys went through this.
That's a good question, because I was looking at that too over the weekend, so is that gonna be code enforcement, or is that just gonna be dealing with what they come across when they're out there?
Well, it says in the contract code, or, you know, yeah, check all in force.
Yeah, that's why we had to change that.
I wonder if we should just change that, or code slash animal, so it's clear, might not be a bad thing.
Well, how much was their animal in public before?
Did we have one?
I don't, you have them.
We did have one, because they were...
The city and county split the expenses on it.
How come we stopped doing that?
But the, uh, funny, ma'am.
We had two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in our current budget.
You know, a stray dog.
Had a couple.
We just don't...
Really, put them down.
There's been a couple.
People may used to have the dog pound out at the airport.
Well, that, yeah, they haven't used that for a long time, that was pretty good.
Anything else on the sheriff's... What you do?
No, I actually don't have any.
Um, just on the administrative fees. That's a question I have.
Which one are you on?
Oh, just the second page on...
Is that the one we...
Inter-fund service.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's sixty-three fifty, that was the one that Sheriff Taylor said to ask Anna about, she can explain that, because there's some insurances and all kinds of other different small items that are buried, and that's sixty-three fifty. So that's, because he tried to explain it to me, and he couldn't remember what she told him.
And he tried to tell me that she's gonna explain it, but I just wanted to bring it up here, so that we...
That was actually, I was looking for that.
I highlighted it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, she's, I mean, he couldn't explain it to me, that's why I said, well, I can have Anna come to the...
Yeah, because that's, this year, yeah, sixty-three fifty, but next year...
Yeah, it's almost twenty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Is that a stipend for Hannah, or is that something different?
No, there, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of small stuff.
But that should explain, because that's...
Yes, it needs to be explained, and Sheriff Taylor even said it needs to be explained, so we're clear on what it is.
So, when they put the mileage up above, and that's just when the guys go to school or training, is that what they put that in there for?
Yeah, because if they take their personal vehicle, they gotta pay a mileage.
County does that way, instead of, I mean, a pool car or something like that. Some still use it, but most of us, we don't push it personally.
Well, it's easier than...
Yeah, it's easier, and then you don't have to...
They don't get far?
Worry about when you're in the heat, and you're gonna have to go in and do something on your own.
I know, yeah, there's been a lot of people getting in trouble for that, yeah, over the years, especially officers.
They go to Walmart, and they just...
Yeah. Still, all the people in the parking lot, they look at that.
Shut down Apple Walmart.
I'm just wanting to get at it, like you. So I don't put Walmart.
All right, let's go to the next one. The laser position, Nikki's not here, so, and what for, I don't know which year she's... You know, I kept going over this, Darwin, and I just, I don't know, I just, I think some of it needs to be separated, fire needs to separate from sheriff, and I don't want... I just, I don't know, I just, because I have certain ones that I like to stick with, and new ones that I wanna try, and especially with the chamber and the fire, because I don't have been going with their fire meetings.
Well, that's why, I mean, I remind you that I think that the mayor should be involved in all of this, just like the town manager is, and I don't, I mean, you're gonna be appointed to certain groups which may overlap on somebody's assignments, and add like, drill them out as a proposal, but, I mean, I don't, I don't see, um, why you shouldn't feel like just say, oh, I'm gonna show up to this meeting today, or I'm gonna show up to that meeting, you know, just to get more information, you know? You know, if I was, I wanna do, I'd wanna go to everything I could.
Can you give me a copy of that?
I am.
I, I...
Me too.
Bring mine, I've got one.
I'll bring the whole bunch.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good.
Well, I, I like the fact of rotating every year.
Well, I don't mind rotating so much as I do, um, the designation of a certain category, because it can be...
We're not limited to letters, I mean, they don't, letters don't mean anything. It's not, I mean, I'm not tiling these a category, I'm just looking at as, as kind of, things that are similar, only because then you focus on, oh, I'm, I'm kind of safety this year, next year I'm more economic development. Now I'm more planning, working with these kind of people now, again, and working on...
I prefer to do a mix of those things first.
Yeah. I mean, there's still somewhat of a mix, these things, public works, I propose with swimming, but that's still...
You have swimming.
Economic development. And whatever, there's still gonna be a mix, regardless.
I don't know, I just feel that this is all, try to split this up a little bit better, if we're, where we don't end up with three people going to one meeting.
Well, I don't think that's ever the case, I mean, I don't think, I mean, there, there may be some where two or three of us may already be required, and I only say two, or three, meaning if the birds are as well, like, go ahead, yourself, her, and maybe one other person, but... You get rotated meetings, I mean, you could say, well, all these guys are gonna go, some of the time, I'm gonna go, you make it when you can make it, I mean, a lot of those meetings are in climate, I mean, not all the time you wanna go in climate, just for a meeting that's three hours long, two, three hours long, and be like, it drove, it cost the town all this extra money for me to drive over here when I could've just got on the phone.
Yeah, I can obviously do the cell phone on, or the conference call, because I cannot justify...
Let's go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, and that's something whoever's the liaison with you can do that.
Yeah.
In here, with you, yeah.
Again, my big thing is, and why I just divided it into four is because I think the board and mayor should have all authority to go to any of these meetings at any time.
Yep.
And you're gonna be specially assigned and appointed because of these committees outside of liaison assignments, so... Four rotation, those four years you serve, if not reelected, so then you can hit all four of these topics in, you know, in one time. I mean, we can swap them around, I guess that's, that's something maybe, maybe we can compromise on, is if we just wanna swap these a little bit around, but then still make it, yeah, they, this is just, it was just a quick thing, but if you wanna say, let's move this one over here, this one back over here, and vice versa, then I think we still ought to do some kind of rotation.
Well, I'm gonna pause the station, right?
So I guess maybe we should just hash this out, which ones do we wanna move?
I can write them all down on the board.
Well, wait, she's gonna bring us copies.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And I don't care anyway. I like the rotation, because we do get to spend a year with each one of them, and I think that's a good idea, we get to know, especially for Nikki and I, because we don't know a lot. So it'll be easier to...
Some of these is not much of a, some of these really is not much of a commitment.
Well, Saturday market, for one thing, I mean, you know, you go to a couple meetings, and, you know, and you're just...
The Christmas committee's not much.
No, that's December, yeah.
November, December.
And some of them, we should just say...
I don't know about the senior citizen board.
I don't know if we...
Because I thought...
I just took this one.
Sharon went on it, but I don't know if, if it ever, you know, they ever really wanted the town on their board.
Yeah, Sharon was on the senior citizen.
Well, yeah, we're not really being on their board, we're just a liaison.
Yeah, we're not, we are not a voting member of their board.
It's like part of the chamber, I mean, you're not a voting member, you're there.
And, and I'll tell you with the chamber, when I was over there, I sat on the corner of the, of the table, because there wasn't room in there for a whole lot of people, so I, I wanted to keep that one.
Thanks, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir. I was gonna say something, but then, I didn't want to, then you referred to that over... I was gonna say mammoths for a whole thing, but I was...
Hey, you're a walker. I just hope people take you outside when you're around.
Don't worry, I'm not scared.
We stick together, you know?
That I do believe.
Air, air quality?
No, air, egg form.
Um, who had the egg form?
Well, it always, it always was Michael Hughes, and I don't, we ever had anybody after that.
Darwin had the egg form, I...
Which is good, you know?
Oh, you did it at school.
Yeah, I'm with the school now anyways, so...
Yeah, well, that's good.
You know, just enough to get you into a...
Okay. So you, you just divided these up into different categories, Darwin, and I missed that, or something, so...
Yeah, I just, I did it, I mean, it was like January, when we were first talking about this, and I just went and sketched out, I took the current stuff that we have from before these two got on, and I just kinda reorganized, I took four main groups, that, you know, departments, public works, planning, fire, police, I put kinda as one, as knowing that we're working on getting rid of the police, the full functioning operation that we require, and then I put chamber as kind of separate. I think, we could definitely split the fire and police, and then, you know, put chamber under something else, and not be as, as one main focus. I think, we could definitely split the fire and police and then, you know, put chamber under something else and not be as, as one main focus.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's only room on there really for one person in that chamber.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to do it.
We can eliminate it as one of these layers, or in five years, too. I mean, a lot of these, I mean, there's no...
Well, I don't think we want to eliminate it, um, I mean, the mayor will be our liaison, I think that's, I think that's adjustable, there's nothing to say you can't do it.
And he, this list seems like it's grown over the years, and it's like, do we really need to be liaisons too, it's really just our departments, I mean, all these other things are just like, oh, special appointments and stuff.
Some of these things are, yeah, I agree, why not?
Do we really need to be on the airport committee? I don't know.
Well, did we ever have, anybody on the airport committee?
I'm looking.
I mean...
Regional solutions team? Roberto already is, Ray already is, I mean, do we need that even more? I don't know.
Well, that's the thing, I think...
Airport, Darwin was.
Because I'm...
It's set in, it's set in, it's hard to...
No, I think what we need to think about, do these people want us to be a liaison?
Yeah, and that's why I said, like, somebody has to...
Definitely that we're gonna appoint somebody and start showing up at meetings. And I just have a question, is, are the liaison positions, were they defined and made for the manager, um, position?
Possibly, yeah, maybe these are...
Well, they were, they were way back prior to the town, when, you know, the mayor was, and they had a mayor and town council, a little town manager. Right. And that's when, especially to the various departments that the council members were. And, and now, I guess I agree that to be a liaison to the, um, public work, for instance, you know, I, I see the only valuable thing as maybe being on a hiring committee if we have... A vacancy, interviewing people.
Yeah, that would be something separate from a liaison, though. It would actually be important to...
Well, yeah, but, yeah, that's true, but you were, you know, so, you know...
That's why, like, one of those, these, again, the very first year I got on, one of the ones that was listed was contract negotiations. Union contracts, I guess is probably how it was worded, but that was a liaison position.
Well, and I still think we should do that, I really do.
It would help speed it up, goes...
Well, I think that the, the value of it is that, you know, the... You can bring to the council, the council the proposal, and we can say, yeah, we, you know, we could vote for that contract and we're not gonna vote for it.
See, some of these, whatever Roberta has, actually pertain to her job. So, you know, the wood jobs, the reconstruction, um, the enterprise removal, the, um, labor negotiation, emergency management, Skoed, Skoed. Nine-one-one and the government. You know, they fall already into...
Well, yeah, if she's dealing with those already, there's no reason to have a liaison for those, and that doesn't make sense.
Does she just want them along?
Well, if we wanna come hang out with you, we can still do that.
You can still do that anytime you want. Just give us your schedule and, you know, I'll look at it.
Well, divide your schedule up in this, like, bunch ones you would let it not go to.
Yeah, I'll go and get back and take a look, yeah, I know.
I mean, I mean, if Roberto's attending a lot of these, there's no reason to have a second person there, unless that second person wants to be there.
And then with the Y, I don't know.
That was a fun, exciting trip, huh? Oh, the Y.
We wrote the bread.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, I don't know, what do we want?
I mean, like, public work, she sees Jeff every day.
See, she's also our personnel, I think, I remember her fire.
So, you know...
Yeah, the idea with Jeff is just about on a, oh, not so much a daily basis now, but every week, you know, you'll visit on some things.
I visit, what we're doing here, I see him here, and we did it, but, you know...
Well, I put down the shop or...
Yeah.
Or I go for the job site.
But anyway, so, I guess...
Well, let's figure out how you wanna do it. I'm...
Well, and it's like on, let's just say, every Tuesday morning, nine o'clock, except this week. You know, I meet with Daryl, Jeff, usually Jeff Hedlund, you know, so the four of us meet. That's just kind of a standing thing that any time anybody wants to come in, you know, that's fine, because it kind of helps you know some more stuff that's going on, and, um... I try to meet with everybody, um, you know, like that. But I don't think it hurts having one or two of you, you know, like me, I assume how people have input in it.
Do you think eight o'clock Tuesday mornings?
Nine.
Nine o'clock, why am I missing them?
You gotta wake up and get out of bed, right?
I do get up, I'm up, I'm up six o'clock when my wife gets up, she makes sure of that. Go out, clean the car off and start it.
Day half over, it says.
I was talking to Jeff yesterday, just so you know, that, um, and I said, I want him to come before the council in a session like this to... Identify things that are coming up and permits that need to be done, and the, I know Daryl met with you, you know, a couple weeks ago. But Jeff, like, we were going over a permit that's going to become, need to be renewed, and can't renew it, not renew it, you know, how's it gonna go, do we need to prepare for it? You know, so, I, I told him I really wanted him to make a list, and then we'll sit down like this and kind of, so you guys are aware of some of these things that are critical, that are coming down, but... You know, and I'm gonna make a list too, of like, all the bonds, where we are, and when they're due, and when they escalate, so that you guys are aware, you know, as we're...
What's gonna happen.
I think it's, it's critical.
It's very critical.
Yeah, so, we talked about that yesterday, I think it was yesterday, we need to do that. And I've asked for their budgets, so far I haven't seen anybody's budget yet, but... Yeah.
You'll get it at the eleventh hour, that's how budgets work.
I know, I know, so...
You know, we can do like Darwin says, move each around.
Well, and are we going to keep all of them? I think that's something we really discuss before we...
I mean, like, if Roberto's going, and if we wanna join her, we're more than welcome to, but if Roberto's already going, why would we need to have a second person there?
Well, that's the thing, yeah, that's why we...
In some ways, I think it's good to have assignments, it doesn't mean you're gonna go on some of these, but if, if it's open invitation, need anybody to go... You run into a situation of, oh, well, I was, I didn't tell you I was gone, but you get three people showing up, and then you're in an illegal meeting, for one. But also, because then if, some of these things are gonna take you out of the area, like Skoed, Skoed, whatever, and just have an open invitation, then come back in here, have, have my receipt for, you know, my money, and it's like, whoa, we didn't, we didn't really authorize that. So that's why if you're a liaison over these things, and, you know, you may have a standing invitation to go to these meetings, and the expenses, you know, it's gonna get paid, but... If it's just like an open invitation, then, oh, I'm not showing up to anything, and nobody's saying we're gonna do that, but that's why, I know the commissioners did that, because it was kind of a, whoa, you know, people coming up.
Well, the other good thing about having that person on these ropes is, oh, they say I can't go. So, I know I can't go this Friday, or whatever, so, will you please cover that?
Sure, there, let me know. But some of these, yeah, some of these may just need to be scratched, I mean, I almost think, I just took word for word what was in the previous one.
Yeah, I understand.
And try to balance it.
Yeah, and I, I...
Like, we got community development, and then we also got economic development, is there... Is there a difference between those two?
They can probably handle each other.
Yeah, I mean, it could be the same thing, so we can just scratch, I always scratch the community development, we just call it like economic development.
See that?
Be under B, sort of down B.
I was looking, which one?
Community development. We'll probably scratch that one.
So you're crossing out one of them?
I think, I don't know about that.
Enterprise zone is not even handled by someone locally anymore, it's done by Betty Riley, which was a change about five years ago. Which I had been appointed at early on, and then, and we shuffled some of the assignments, I said, look, that would be with economic development person up here, so... But then, that position changed over a lot before Ginger got hired, and then, and then, whatever reason, they kicked it to Betty, because she, you know, stable and not...
Well, Darwin's on your list here, I don't see the, she didn't ring Ginger.
Yeah, so are you saying we should not have the enterprise zone on, on this list, or...
It's, it's one where I don't see anybody really being involved that much.
I just make a comment in regards to the enterprise zone, the function of that, I think primarily is if you've got a business that comes in, you need a representative to go through the community service negotiations with that person that's locating in the enterprise zone. So that, I mean, you're gonna ultimately have to do that anyway.
Yeah, and I remember you were helping highly heavily with...
And you don't ever know when something will walk in the door and say, hey, we're locating...
Yeah, it's, it's definitely important, it's just kind of...
Yeah, it's very simple.
Manager should always know, mayor should always know, and then it's like, other than that...
Well, or someone can be appointed at, that happens.
I think you were council president at the time, when you got appointed, right?
Well, I, I just, I served as economic development and then enterprise zone all the time, I think, and so...
Yeah, I think you did, yeah, at least about the time you're around the council.
Negotiations.
Well, and I just want to throw in, you know, that community development that we scratched, we're, we're gonna, we're trying to do the downtown development. Which is different than the economic development overall, because we have meetings, it's gonna become a joint meeting. So we might wanna just change that to instead of community, but downtown, or, or leave it the same, but I think we need to have...
Well, like, LCP was once downtown main focus.
Yeah, and they're still, you know, working on stuff that we're covering in, on Main Street, again. But, we might wanna either have community development left there, or downtown development, or something.
Yeah.
That's just a thought.
That's fine, it could be, yeah, down...
That would be good. What about the airport? I have no...
That one there, I can't, you know, that's, that's county, um, and...
So they had a stand...
The town really doesn't have a...
So they had this airport advisory committee formed, um, two thou, I mean, way before I even got here as a planner, but then we, we appointed people in like two thousand and twelve. Roughly, because we were going through airport master plan update, and so they did want somebody from the town on that committee, and I, Ray Sims as manager served on it, but I think there was, I think Michael Hughes was on it at the time.
Could've been, yeah, I know Ray Sims for sure.
I'm almost certain it was Michael Hughes, actually, so, so it was on appointment, but it was...
Since then, no?
Hasn't happened, I think since then, and so...
It's like the railroad, right, you know, you said it had, but there's, but they, we, we did have a railroad meeting about, what, eight months ago, like that, they asked for the council, which I didn't, I, we haven't had any follow-up.
But is it like an ongoing, like, so, um, committee that leads?
The railroad is, but I don't know about the airport.
The airports are standing committees with appointments, and those positions are appointed and, with no term, um, like, only terms four years, and then you reappoint somebody else.
So you're someone from the committee?
If you're on it, then you're on it until, and they'll call you when they need you, the kind of...
Right, but if you may, we're at the time, Sharon was on that committee, and they really never had anything going, because the railroad was private. Now it's still private again, but the county has, or I think the county has it back.
Well, county owns and has owned it forever, but we contracted it out.
We contracted it.
Yeah, so, um...
We get away with that committee, but it's not...
But yeah, there's been different operators on the, on the, so, different operators have wanted more of the water.
I'll my emails, I get updates on the railroads.
Yeah, railroad would be one, I mean, it'd be interesting to reach out to the commissioners and you say, hey, do you want somebody living in the town on this, could you, you know? I'm sure they still have the committee, but...
Because they all work, I just said...
Representation, yeah, they call you, which is great, that's why, again, I think, when you look at all these lists, I think, you're the first point of contact, almost always, on all of these things, and then after that, you say, oh yeah, I'll, I'll send some to, send a counselor, or a male, or be part of your group.
And, um, Dave, when I was talking with the sheriff, he asked me to, um... Keep Scott on, on that committee with the sheriff's department, because they work really well together. I guess I should say whichever one Scott takes, and Sam's wanting to be on the police room also.
No, well, actually, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to, I, I would like to be on the, stay on the, the Lipstick, Lipstick, uh, the Lake County Public Safety one, which meets only quarterly, and I know I...
That's different, the sheriff's...
It has nothing to do with the sheriff's, it's probation for all, and, um, so, that one, and it is required by the state law, the town have a representative on it, we are, we are voting on it, but, um, so, anyway.
Well, I think what Sheriff Taylor's going is the liaison position between the town and him for the startup of this contract. Because they do, you know, they helped him with that.
Well, he has fire sheriff nine-one-one, but that is, that is separate.
It would actually be a different, you know, yeah, and I'm fine with that, if you guys are fine with that, I'll stay on there with the sheriff and keep working with the contract.
Well, Darwin, what I'm, I guess, you know, when you mentioned about moving each around, I don't know, just, uh, let's figure out what ones you want, and then, put them in that cat, in the category of each one. See what I'm saying?
Which is well good.
Well, that's what, basically, that's what we've been doing before, except what you're doing...
Year after year, then, then we can come back to what Mike's problem was all the time, that, but then you want that every year, then I never get a chance to do it, you know, and so, that's why...
Well, you would, I'll be fine.
You got chummy, whoa.
Well, either, either way, if, if we all sit, if we all sit down and we break it out, what we all want, and a year is gonna rotate, so you're only gonna be there for a year anyway. So regardless of which, how you break it down, it's the same thing, you're gonna be there a year, it's gonna rotate, so it doesn't really matter how we break it out, because in a four-year term, you're gonna be a liaison for everyone.
So you only got two years left, if you're gonna run again, so pick the ones you want, and then we'll...
We'll let you decide this, you go right ahead.
What do you want, the next two years?
Yeah, can I appoint everybody else?
And I'll hit them at the end of the...
Because basically what you're doing is, Roberto doesn't have a set, and I don't have a set, well, I only have one, but that's...
The chamber, yeah.
Yeah, essentially, I have all of them.
Yeah, you do have a set, it's A, B, C, and E.
Well...
And all the others, Doc might mention, everything not listed.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't wanna just be naming everything off here, I mean, I don't...
We'll take one at a time.
You got it. I did, I took one.
Okay, Scott?
I got one.
All right, Darwin?
Are you writing these down, so you know what we're doing?
I am.
You're writing them down?
I told you.
Oh, it's, uh, lottery? We do a snake draft, or we can do just straight?
The rest would get lost, Darwin.
And then I guess Nikki gets what's left out.
Well, what's Nikki on?
Nikki's in Crescent City, where you're at.
Okay, so you're sure, so we still have the fire?
Total draft, need a draft.
Nine-one-one.
I'm on the clock, for how many?
I guess you can just leave all three of those into one, because that's, that's Scott's horn.
Here, go wherever you want.
I thought I had you do the board thing.
I would like to stick with the sheriff's contract for a year, just to help get it up now.
What other ones are you interested in?
We end up with all of them in the next three years anyway, so...
Well, I know, but you must know some kind of...
Okay, so, Darwin, you double A, B?
No, just kidding. Yeah, you best move before you start talking.
You might, you might get the clock here.
So Darwin wants one people, right?
I do want some people.
Oh, okay.
I want someone full too, at my house.
Well, I got you written down.
Narrows. Okay, we still have a town safety committee, don't we? Yes, we have to have.
We have to have.
I was on it for a long, uh...
You wanna be back on it?
So go on your schedule. Yes, it does, once a month.
Sure, I'll do that.
Once a month, please?
When they show up.
Yeah, it's gonna be... Yeah, it's gonna be mandatory for everybody to show up for a while, because it's ridiculous.
Yeah, 'cause they don't come.
They're all gonna come.
Or we'll start shooting.
All it can, you know.
You start shooting them while they're talking. I want the sheriff's department. You never know in high school whether I'd be working with the sheriff's department.
Oh, no.
You might picture me in the back of the car, you know, working.
Sandy wanted Lake County Public Safety?
Yes, and I'll take the town safety.
And the town safety?
Yeah, it's under A. I think that's just, um, the fire and dispatch needs to be together right now.
I was just gonna say that, because they're both in the same.
But I think we definitely need a person on that that's.
You want me to? I'd be more happy to. Put me on fire if that's.
Fireman one-one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all that matters.
Darwin, you have some people on. What else?
I'm already going to the chip meetings. I'll stay on that for the rest of this year.
Yeah, I was on that for a while.
That's fine. I go, I can't do it forever. You've been on them for a while.
I know, I know. That's why I have my papers.
Somebody take something for Nikki.
What's you pick? You pick is, is that?
How about parks?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
You, you pick. Okay, Darwin, you know what? You pick this?
You pick?
Yeah, I think it's.
Uh, it might be utility.
Isn't that the?
It's a group of, of, like, safety messages that, I mean, they meet before, I think.
I don't know. Is it still viable? Is it still around?
I think the sheriff has, the sheriff has been involved.
What is?
It, it was, I think, dealing with issues of, of police work and, you know, they did have some money at one time to use for various things.
Is that gone?
Uh, the money's gone, yeah.
So if, if we have Scott as the liaison for the sheriff's office, then. I know, you know, like that, seems to me the fact would follow.
Sure, what are we talking about?
Cause you picked under A.
You pick?
And A, you can pick it if you want.
Okay, yeah.
But we need to find out if there is still an organization out there that meets, because.
I don't know what.
Well, if not, then I don't have to go to meetings. I'll over that.
I haven't, I, usually they would put a notice in the paper. I haven't remembered seeing that for ages.
This one's getting nowhere.
Yeah.
It's starting originally.
And then we have, what'd you do for Nikki?
I don't know.
I haven't done anything for her yet.
Let's give her the parks.
Parks.
I don't know.
It's too bad we don't do.
A Saturday market?
I'm dying to stay.
Parks and Saturday market?
Which ones do you want?
Yeah.
No, I can't do Saturday market, and I've done it for too long. So we can put in those two. How about that?
Pardon?
Have Nikki do parks and Saturday market.
She'll do it if you have parks.
Okay.
Word, oh, I don't.
Under A.
Oh, oh, okay.
And Darwin, you said you'd stay in there, that A four-one, 'cause you're doing it.
Yeah, yeah, I might as well.
Darwin on A four?
In your port.
And your port, so we're just Nikki.
What does Plymouth Housing Authority do?
So we, that one, it never got on yet, so it was one that I suggested we get somebody on to represent this community, and I'm on something similar to the Housing Authority, but it's not. It's, we've got like the Housing Authority Executive Director on it and Pam and, and Betty are both on. It's called like, it's called five, like, economic thing. No, it's like reg, regional.
Well, you have housing. Yeah.
Regional housing or something.
Yeah, we're just, there's somebody on that.
Yeah, I'm on that already, so, put me on that one too, because I do want to get on that board officially, Plymouth Housing Authority.
And then we also have that.
Actually, you should be on that. Take me on. You should be on that.
Take me out there. Put him on it.
Just 'cause of your knowledge of what's going on.
I actually have contacts with.
Yeah, yeah. I would say I'd stay on that. I, the only reason I brought it up, Jack, you know, the only reason I brought it up before is 'cause I was on the Mount here, um, Housing Authority.
Oh, okay.
Back in.
Wait, Sammy?
You guys need to catch up.
No, Sammy, I have you down, I have you down for public safety and town safety.
Right.
What else you wanna say?
I was the chairman, but I took this job.
Pick two, 'cause you're behind.
What about planning?
No, a lot more advocacy. Planning? Um, I would do planning. I enjoy that one. Yeah, the, our, our local planning.
Who's planning? Who needs planning?
Who needs the plan?
Okay, now, did you get that drawn?
Thank you.
And let's see. Oh, my God, this is so hard. And that county housing one too. We're doing the brown spill one right now with the economic opportunity analysis thing.
Mm-hmm, my mind up.
Is that the meeting you missed last night?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, but they're having a meeting tomorrow.
Whatever, yeah, okay. So you're on that one.
Should you?
Okay.
But I wanna, we can all.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be over in June.
Well, we can all go to the meeting on that. Yeah, I wanna go to that meeting.
What is that meeting?
Is everybody?
They're terrible about giving information.
Christmas committee?
Yeah, who wants Christmas on? Christmas?
Who wants Christmas?
I suggested Nikki.
Yeah, put her here. She likes that. She's really into Christmas, too.
That's okay.
For a holiday.
Literally.
That's my most expensive holiday.
Not mine, once again, I'll get you back.
I like Thanksgiving better. I don't have that in yet.
It's the packet for regular receptions.
It's always on Tuesday, Friday.
Tuesdays and Fridays, right?
And the food is one minute.
Christmas advisory committee.
All right, personal advisory.
Oh, anybody else want it? I'll do it. That's a pass.
You might as well do police, do another job, please.
We could.
We have no police.
Well, I know, but you're working with that contract for.
Get sheriff.
Scott's doing the sheriff's, though.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got, um.
That's what I need, is more meetings.
Those kind of emergency meetings?
What's EMS?
Oh, no, you were on Lake.
They have EMS, emergency.
So when you get all this written down, take a picture of it and text it to Nikki. See what she says.
Okay.
Cause she just, the reason I said that, she just texted Nikki. She said.
Oh, it's.
I'm not gonna be able to make the meeting, really, but I would like to be on the budget committee.
On the what?
The budget committee.
We're all on the budget committee.
As she said, I noticed they put in appointments on there instead of the entire council.
Well, there's appointments from the town that are.
From the town.
That the mayor appoints, not, but we are all.
There has, there's supposed to be an equal number of town council, mayor, and community members, and, and we've had a difficult time. We have some openings yet, so that's another thing I wanna put on the radio, just, and it's in the paper, but we need budget committee members and we need planning commission members, so, um, but you're supposed to have an equal number of budget and community, or council and community, so five and five, so you're supposed to have a ten total.
I'll text her and say you're on it.
I passed on it.
What about the, do we still have the lodging tax?
Unless.
Senior center, sad, or not Saturday market, but.
Nine-one-one.